Steve Sherlock for Franklin Matters, Franklin Public Radio, available anywhere, anytime on the internet via your browser at W F P R dot F M. And in the local Franklin Mass F M radio dial one oh two dot nine. Yeah, remember the dial or the buttons one oh two dot nine on the F N band. Here today virtually with a town council candidate for the biennial election in two thousand twenty five. Michael LeBlanc, Michael, thank you for doing this.
I appreciate it, Steve, and again, thank you for putting the time and effort into listening to all of our candidates running for all the offices out there. Appreciate the time and appreciate you allowing me some time to answer questions that some of the residents may have through this through this forum. So I appreciate it.
Yeah, and not that we will cover everything, but I think hopefully we'll have at least hit some of the high points. And then with your contact info, if somebody needs to follow up, they can clearly do so. Because yeah, my goal in this is, and it's not just for me, it is Franklin. We all need to be able to cast an informed vote and we get some relatively new people like you coming back into the fray, so to speak. So we need to find out what's going on and where you are. And so, yeah, I'm I'm looking forward to this as well. I've enjoyed having these kinds of conversations. They're not, as I think we've already talked before going on here. I don't want to make it kind of, I'm asking a question, you're doing an answer. We're going to have a conversation. We'll cover some details, but yeah.
Very good. Awesome.
So getting into it, we'll start with who's Steve talking to? So what's your Franklin story? Your road to Franklin or your life within Franklin? So that people have a little bit of understanding around who's this guy?
Yeah. So who's this guy? So, um, so I've lived in Franklin now for thirty five years. I actually came to Franklin when I met my wife Julie. And she just happens to be, as we affectionately call them, a Franklinite. She's lived here entirely. Other than a couple of years where I took her to Rhode Island, she has lived here. She's born and bred. And and it's part of the reason why we continue to stay here is because of her background here, thirty five years of living here. We've enjoyed living in Franklin, but been living here for thirty five years, been fortunate to build my life here. Actually have four children. They're all grown now. They're all adults. And they've all gone through the Franklin school system. But the best part about those adults, those adults are now married. Even one of them recently just gave me a grandchild, a granddaughter. So hopefully I have more, but I'm months into being a being a grandparent. So that's been wonderful. But Franklin has been home, as I said to you before we got on this, we were looking a couple of years ago to maybe make that big move to the south and blah, 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 and or move to another part of the state, but still be in the state and close to our kids. And when push came to shove, we were fortunate to find one of the last remaining land pieces of land that you can actually build on. And we built a home off Prospect Street and and have been living now in Prospect Street for a couple of years now. So, but but when, but that's, that's how I've been here in Franklin and it's, I've seen it grow again through that thirty five years. I think the other thing is too, I've also been part, I mean, I've been part of the community. I've been part of the community because as you alluded to, there are new candidates and there are new candidates, and I'm one of those new candidates with the fact that back in the early part of the century or the aughts, as we call them, in two thousand and five, I was on the council for a couple of years. So I had that council experience and I think that's kind of one of the benefits. If I was so so choosing to be on the council, I'd kind of come with at least a little knowledge about what happens when you're in those chambers. Before that, I was on the finance committee, served on the finance committee.
That's a key experience driver.
Committee as well. Yeah. So I did that stint too. I was involved, I was on the high school building committee when we built the new high school. So I was part of that and Tom was chairing that one. And obviously the most important thing is with having kids in the community, you get involved in all the recreational sports stuff. And you get to see people and interact and coach and do all that other stuff. And and I try and immerse myself with the community that way. So, because this is home, this is I've I've realized this is we're not going anywhere. I'm 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 here till death do you part. So that's my, that's my Franklin story. So I'm here because of my wife and and I'm glad we, I'm glad we landed here. I'm glad we landed here. So cannot be more proud. So.
No, definitely. I'm I'm glad we've chosen to stay here as well and you will enjoy your grandchildren. I've got two, five and two, and it's precious.
Yeah. Five, five month old is great. I can't wait till she can at least talk to me a little bit. So that piece. So, but she's getting it.
Indeed. Yep, definitely. Civil discourse, as we were talking beforehand too, is a key component of our democratic republic form of government. The political party divide unfortunately is certainly wider now than ever. And as an individual coming into the Franklin government, what would you do to help either avoid or bridge that divide?
Yeah, I mean, there's obviously a lot of that going on right now. And I think as an as an individual and more importantly, or especially as a counselor, I think it's one of the most important things that individuals or especially a counselor can do is help bridge that political divide that that's between us. And we can do that by doing a few things, by leading with respect, respecting people first of all. Listening with intention. It's just not the listen, but you've got to, you've got to, there's a, there's a reason why you're listening or you're hearing exactly what they say. And then ultimately, I say this all the time, while we may be divided, I believe eighty percent of us all believe in this. We all have the same shared values. We may just, we may not agree in the way to get to it. But ultimately, I think we all have the same shared values. And if we focus on those three things and not worry about the political letter that comes after that person's name, the R, the U, or whatever. I think that's, that's a critical piece. And I think it's also to try and not be from a, when you're talking about local issues, it really is, it's not partisan. And in fact, that's the one great thing about Franklin's election. It's a nonpartisan election. There are no, there are no letters after your name. It's, it really tries to be a nonpartisan election. Because ultimately, the residents are really concerned about, and it's not, this is not any particular order and it's probably, and it's not everything. But they're, they're concerned about the quality of life and public safety and schools and infrastructure. And ultimately, how are we going to treat each other as neighbors? That's really what I believe everyone is concerned about. And that's what we, that's what we need to be respectful of. And to answer the question of how am I going to do that? I think we need to do that by creating kind of time and space for us to have open civil discussions. I mean, that, that is the key thing. They have to truly be civil discussions where everybody feels that their voice was heard. You really do. And in fact, that's kind of a mantra of, if you start seeing my campaign signs going up, it's they say your voice represented. That's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to represent the, the, the residents' voices. And I think they need to be able to be heard and realize that even if we disagree that, that we just have to understand that the disagreement, we can disagree, but we don't have to be disagreeable about it. So I think, I think the other thing is, is that it's also not, it's also about not winning an argument. This is not right or wrong. We have to solve a problem. That's what we're all in this to do. It's not, there's no, we, that, we, we have to be able to realize we're trying to solve a problem and to do that, we all need to be approachable and fair and, and be, and go into things with an open mind. I think that's the key thing to get around or to, to deal with this, with the civil discourse that's out there when it comes to political views, from my perspective. So.
Yeah, no, I agree. The Franklin community and I've been here twenty, well, thirty years. So we came in just behind you. But the best parts of us are when, when we come together truly as neighbors, roll up our sleeves and solve a problem. I'd like to take that approach somehow for our fiscal government and town government and do that same thing. Because yeah, I'd argue perhaps it's even greater than eighty percent of our goals are actually even together. But some of those, you know, buzzwords kind of turn people different ways. And if we started explaining, well, how are we going to get there? Well, if we don't go this way, but we go that, we still get there? That, that still works, right?
Correct, correct. And I think you brought up something that actually I had in my bullets, because obviously you're prepared for this conversation a little bit. In that, you're right, it's people are looking to say certain, it's because of, unfortunately, it's because of a little bit of social, it's clickbait rhetoric is the way I phrase it. Is, is I'm trying to say something to, to drive, to drive my point across. And that's ultimately what it does is it doesn't drive your point across, it turns, it turns the opposition's nose up. And then they become, everyone's back gets up. And I think we just have to realize, to your point, eighty, ninety, a hundred, could be ninety five percent, ninety nine percent. I don't, we, we just all have to realize that, to your point, we're a very small community. We're only thirty seven, thirty eight thousand, whatever the, I can never remember the actual count.
Yeah, thirty five.
Small enough community that we can, as they, as they always say, why can't we all get along? We just need to all get along. And I think we can get there. We can get there. So.
We're all neighbors. Some of us are closer neighbors than others. We need to behave as neighbors that are close.
Yeah, because I'm going to see you at the Stop and Shop or the Shaw's or the, or the McDonald's or the Burger King.
Bowl fields or, yeah.
Correct, or the ball fields. Correct. Exactly. Exactly. So.
Good. So next question, in terms of drawing on your background and experience, what will help you, other than kind of that two years, you at least have your exposure into the council? What would help you serve in this particular role? Or what do you bring to the table that would help set you a pot potentially for others competing in this role?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I think my background that I, my couple of years I talked about already, whether it was on the finance committee. And yeah, granted, it was, I hate to say it, twenty years ago, I can't believe it's been twenty years, but it's been twenty years. But ultimately, government doesn't change. But it's, it's that, that I think will help. It helps get me a leg up, gives me start a quicker. I think the other piece is obviously I bring my professional experience, which I'll talk about in a minute, and obviously anything that happened to me personally in life, I, you always bring that into how you deal with things. But from a professional standpoint, I've been fortunate that in my, well, long career now, since the mid eighties, since I graduated from college, that I've been in the healthcare business for all of those years, except for a couple of years stint in Albon Pan, selling cookies and croissants and all that other stuff, working in the corporate office. But, but predominantly, my entire career has been in kind of the finding side, the operation side of healthcare. I've actually had the pleasure to own three assisted living facilities in New Hampshire. So I've owned and operated my own company. I used to love to say I had two hundred grandparents that I used to take care of and see.
That's a little bit of a challenge and we probably have to have a separate conversation about that at some point.
Yeah, especially when I owned them, I definitely felt like they were my grandparents. And when something happened to them and in New Hampshire, the way assisted living work is you literally do take them to their grave. It is that kind of care that they get up there. But it was a, it's, but it's like anything else. It's a business. You have to run it. And Franklin in and of itself is a business. It truly is. We're a business. It's, it's the, you have a hundred and fifty million dollar budget. That's a business. I have a hundred and fifty million dollar company. It's the same exact thing. So, so having that experience of running a business or being involved in, in the finance side or operation side, which is what I do today. I actually currently today work for a national provider of outpatient radiology services. That's East Coast and West Coast based. And in that role, my, my primary job is to collect the money. That, that is my primary job. So and so I think that's, so with anything else, it's how you collect that money and how you use that money. So I think that experience is certainly what I'm going to leverage when it comes to the budget. How to, how to make sure two plus two equals four, can two plus two equal three point nine and save a little bit? We'll look at that. But I also believe in the, in the concept, and I say this, even from a business perspective, sometimes you have to spend money to make money. And I think one of the, the things that I'm trying to, will try and pursue, and I think is one of the reasons why I'm also running is we do need to find a way to build new growth in the community, new, new housing, additional additions to homes. We need that, we need to go back. If you think back in the nineties, we didn't need overrides. We budgets were being funded because we had a ton of new growth. I'm not saying we're ever going to get to that level again. I don't think we ever do want to get to that level, but we need new growth. So we need to find a way to invest money to, or create policies that will allow us to grow the tax base in town through new growth. And I think that's a critical piece that we need to investigate right off the bat. So that little experience I've had is will be what I try and do when I start off in the council. How do we bring more revenue into this, into the town? That's not an override, but it can be through other means. I want to try that first.
Something that becomes sustainable.
Correct. Exactly. Exactly. We need sustainable revenue. That is, that's, that is a good word, a very good word. I'm going to throw that in my notes.
Go ahead. I don't, I don't put royalties on it. It's, it's.
That's perfect. I love free, I love free advice. That's the best advice.
Yes, yes. One of the key responsibilities, since you've already been on the council, is to hire and provide oversight for the town administrator and his or her team. For example, while you serve as an escalation point for the town folk, it does not necessarily include micromanaging a particular department or operation. Do you agree or disagree? And explain?
Okay. Well, I certainly, like I was just saying, it's, the town of Franklin is a business. And the way I look at it is the town council is the board of directors, the town administrator is the CEO. And in business, those two things clearly have their lines of demarcation. So as you're saying, do I agree or disagree? I agree with the concept that, yes, that I respect the structure of that local government. And that means that the town council's responsibility is to serve as a legislative and policymaking body. That's what our primary job is to the community, to Frank, the residents of Franklin. And, and part of that responsibility is to hire the town administrator, to evaluate that town administrator. And all, but just as important to provide direction to that town administrator. And sometimes I think that's where people, where we can influence a little bit, provide the direction. But that ultimately means that town administrator is really the one who's responsible for overseeing the day to day operations of the town. We may provide some direction, but really it is the town administrators, in my opinion, role to do the day to day stuff. And ultimately, when you think about it, again, going back to what the council's responsibility is, it's to, like I said, set priorities, adopt policies, approve the budgets, ensure accountability at the highest level. But like I said, it's not to get involved in the direct management. And really, like I said, the town administrator is the CEO. And I would expect him, just like I expect the CEO of my, CEO of my company, he does, he runs the day to day stuff. He's the one who calls me. I'm not getting phone calls from the board, getting phone calls from my CEO as to where the money is. So. So I do think it's important that those two roles are not intertwined. And ultimately, it is not the council's job to micromanage those, those resources. It's not, I don't, I do not believe it is. So that's why we hire a town administrator, is to do that, whether it's a town administrator, mayor, or whatever. For us, it's a town administrator. That's, that's what their role is. So I do not want to upset that apple cart. So.
Good. Thank you for that. And as you've said and acknowledged, the council approves the annual budget, which sets the priorities for how Franklin operates. Faced with the fiscal challenges for the next several years, what are the financial priorities you think we need to address? I think you may pick up on that point in terms of spending to get to something, to enable stuff. And then there's two additional parts of that. And if, if you need a reminder, I feel free to add that too. But how would you explain what needs to be done to the voters and residents? And then what would you do to help the community understand the separation of roles between the council and the school committee?
Yeah. Yeah. So I think the, the first thing about kind of what my priorities are, I mean, first of all, I think, going back to my comment of really political discourse I talked about, when you think about it, residents really want to focus on quality of life, public safety, schools, infrastructure. So ultimately, and that's actually part of kind of the, the master plan, those are key components of the master plan. So the budget has to align with that master, with that master plan in theory. So I think we have to make sure our guiding principle in those areas, our budgets align with that. So if we want public safety, what's it going to cost to fund that public safety? So I think as long as we align or what our goals are with the budget, I think that becomes an easier sell to folks. At the same time, as I alluded to before, I'd rather look for ways to generate more revenue, sustainable revenue, use that word, to help close that gap. So to add two more police officers and eight more teachers or whatever. What can we do to drive additional revenue in town to new growth? Because that's the only way. We get two and a half percent, the rest of it has to come from new growth. So and then I think the big piece around that is how do you then, as you said, how do you inform to the voters and the residents and kind of explain that stuff to them? I do like what the council did and the school committee did leading up to the last override vote. They did get out there. They did try with six different working or sessions, I'm not saying working sessions. That was their attempt to, to try and educate the folks. I think there's better, there may be better ways to do that, to continue to educate folks. So any way that we can communicate effectively, again, all my themes are the same. How do we have open time and space to have these open dialogue conversations? So I think that's a key component to continue to build the trust. And I think that's probably one of the reasons why the last override, while it was not quite half of the first override, there's still this little bit of distrust out there. Was it really that the right number? And I think ultimately, one of my creative ways to get around that is I would rather, and it's, you can hear it from the residents. Why can't, like, I think the residents want to get involved more. And I think one of the ways to do that is if and or when there has to be another override proposed to close a gap, because we've done everything and we've explained it to the residents and they get it. I'd like to see us put more of a tiered approach, what's called either a tiered or pyramid approach to an override. That says one million, two million, three million, you get to choose what you want. You get to choose, it's, it's, for lack of a better term, it's an à la carte menu. You choose what you want back in. For a million dollars, you get this, this, and this. For two million, you get what was in the million dollar one and you get this, this, and this. So I think if we do that, I think you would get, one, you may get residents to vote for the first, for the first option and never the other four options or whatever there is. But I do think that putting that back in the hands of the residents may be a better way to buy their trust and to get their buy-in for potentially an override. So I think that there's creative ways to do that. And I would certainly look to, again, have honest conversations with the residents before even a decision like that was even put forth from a ballot perspective. So. But I think, again, I think we're, I'm not going to say a long way away from that discussion. Because I would like to, again, explore avenues to, to generate more sustainable revenue in some way, shape or form. So now, you asked the question of the school committee and the council. And I think that, that's always, even when I was on the, the council twenty years ago, it's always the sticky widget. It really is. And we all know that the school budget represents more than half of the town budget. I think this past year, it's almost close, like fifty, fifty-five, sixty percent of the budget is the, is the town's, is the, is the school budget. And I think this is how I look at it. It is the town council's responsibility to provide the, what we believe is the amount of money they should get. And that's, that's our goal. What fits within our fiscal responsibility, this is the amount that you get based upon everything else that's out there. It is the school committee's job, just like I was saying, for the town administrator to do the day to day management. It's the schools committee's job to determine how they want to spend that money. It's not really the councils. However, I will say this, I am a, while I am, while I would be a counselor, I still am a citizen. And I still, if I have questions about certain things, I still would want to be able to ask those questions, like, do you need this and that? But ultimately, it's the school committee's responsibility to decide how they want to spend their eighty million dollar, I can't remember what the number is this year, whatever that number is.
It's eighty, eighty-two, something in that ballpark.
Something like in that range. So it's up to them how they want to spend it. If they want to give it all to themselves, give it all to the administration, it's up to them and that, that, that is, that is their decision. But ultimately, it is the council's decision based upon looking at all, all the departments in town to say, well, what percentage are they going to get out of that? And I think that's where always the, the difficult rub is. And it happens when I was running, I still see it happen today. They throw out a number, town council and the numbers are never the same. We gotta, gotta stop that. I think that's part of the process. And again, hopefully, I do, I will say there's one thing that, since I've been watching more council meetings over the last year or so, I do like the time when Tom yields to the school committee chair at the beginning of the meetings. It's not, for those who don't watch school committee, I'll be honest, I really regularly don't watch school committee meetings, but I'll watch town council meetings. It's a way to communicate. I would actually rather see that be more of a, of a standing agenda item, so he's not having to stand up there. Like, let's, okay, David, you're going to come here, the chair is going to come here. And every month, once a month, he's going to get twenty minutes sitting down at the table and yada, yada, yada. I'd rather see that. It's almost, it doesn't, it comes across as more often, David, can you come up and just tell us what's going on? I know it's not that way, but I'd rather see it be more of a kind of a structured thing. And again, it's all about communication and how we can make things simpler for people to understand. Because it is the largest part of the budget. It's also has the most scrutiny from the public. And I've even argued from, from me as a citizen. But, but again, as a counselor, there's kind of two roles. There's, I give them a number, but that doesn't preclude me from asking some questions from a citizen's standpoint. Those are kind of two different things. So.
No, no, that's, that's fair. I agree with that. And fortunately, you mentioned the master plan already. Do you support the goals and recommendations of the two thousand twenty five master plan? And if so, what would you do as the town council to help implement them? Or if not, why not?
So so in getting ready to run, I did read through it. I didn't read through it when it was finished. So obviously, you know, so I did read through it. And there are definitely, when I started looking through the goals and the economic development and housing and land use, there are definitely some attributes in there, and I'll speak to them, that I, I go, okay, I like those things. And let's see if, and there are others that I think, that I think are great. But I just, I don't see it in Franklin. I'll give you a perfect example. It's, there's a, the traffic and circulation section. And I think the first goal was, in fact, I'm going to read it, make the town increasingly more walkable and bikeable. I cannot say enough, I would love the town to be more walkable. I live on Prospect Street, for all yous, that's, that is, on the Bellingham side. It is now, I'll call it Route, True Prospect Street. I got nine thousand cars. Yes, I know it is a scenic road. I can't walk on that road. There's nine thousand cars that go down that. Now, I would love that sidewalk on my road.
No.
So, yeah, so it's not even walkable. So I agree with the walkable part. The bikeable part, that's like, I don't see a bunch of people biking. And I don't see me get on my bike and ride to the Stop and Shop and get my groceries and da, da, da. So there's some components of it, and that's a great example where I think there are pieces of it I think are realistic. And there are pieces that, in the grand scheme of things, I don't, even if we gave everyone in Franklin a bike, I don't see a lot of people getting out there and riding their bike. And that's, that's, but in the grand scheme of things, when I look at the sections around economic development, when it talks about developing the downtown, I, I, I think that's a number, that's got to be a number one, it's got to be, I won't say number one goal. That's got to be a primary goal of the council. I, it's, I'm, I'm not going to hearken back to when my wife was a younger, back in the sixties and seventies and what the downtown was. But we, we need to have a vibrant downtown. We need to find a way to understand why that storefront or that restaurant is not able to get tenants. And I want to understand the reasons why. And we need to find a way to get more. We need more juice. We need more of them and bigger coming out of the downtown. So whatever we can do to, to drive that downtown development, I am one hundred percent for that. In fact, I, I really wish, when, when I was a counselor back in two thousand, that's when we got the, when Senator Kennedy was around. That's when he gave us a seven million dollar grant to develop the downtown. And we were kind of limited in what we could do. And it ended up being, how do we redirect the roads? That's really where the money, I would have rather it's been in other things. But it was limited what we can do. But I definitely think that's one of the things that we need to do is to find a way to revitalize downtown. The other piece that was in there talked about housing. And I truly, this is, this is a passion of mine. We, we do need to find a way to build homes in Franklin. We need more housing. But we don't need more, when I say housing, I mean physical homes that I can own as an asset. I want people to own an asset. I don't want someone to rent something. I want people to own something. So we need to find a way to create an. an avenue so that we can build, when I say affordable homes, it means a home that is affordable for everybody. It's, you could have a small income or big income. I, I have children that work, make good livings, but they can't even afford a four hundred or five hundred thousand dollar home right now. They just can't afford it with everything that's going on. So we need to find ways, creative ways to um to build homes that are affordable for everybody. And uh, so that's when I say, when I talk about affordable, they're smaller homes, they're more, they're more dense around smaller lots. Those kind of creative ways, again, it also will help solve a little bit of the new growth. It'll get new homes built, it'll drive up the growth. So I'm definitely for that. And then the other point I want to talk about was uh land use, and um, one of the things on the, on that list was about the Franklin character. And I think that's another thing that triggered me to run is certainly we've had a lot of development around, around apartments. And I really wish that we took into account kind of the look and the feel of those apartments that they're built. They, they seem to be all three, four-story blocks, no character to them.
Right.
As they face, they say face East Central Street, there's, it just looked like monolithic walls. I wish we found ways to be creative in so that they blend in more with the community. Maybe they look more like a house in the front, but the thirty feet back, it looks like a, it's a three-story apartment or something like that. I, I it's just these monolithic buildings that are going up with no character. Yeah, I, I think I would love to see a better kind of standards around if things get constructed and and what they look like. So I, I definitely think from a land use and design and character, we need to kind of continue to maintain that Franklin character that we've had for a long, long time. And I think um, that, that's another key component. So I do agree with lots of, lots of the, the goals in the tw- in the twenty twenty-five master plan. And there are, like I said, a few that I get a little chuckle out of, and uh, I mean, I understand their intent, but there's a little bit of a chuckle.
Yeah, there's some aspirational stuff in there too.
Right.
Yeah, I think one of the things that is interesting from my point of view is that um, the unique structure of design review, it's kind of advisory, it's not really an enforcement board. Um, and that's one of the key pieces, I think, that at some point in time, we need to get to define what is that Franklin character a little bit more so. And then get into the design review, because I think that was constructed as a doc back in twenty years ago, and it hasn't really been adjusted since. So, yeah, that, that's an opportunity, not for me, but for the community to get into at some point in time, yes.
Yeah, I mean, when you, when you go to, like, I have friends that live in the, the Low Country in South Carolina, every, all the buildings along, even the busiest streets all have the same look that, that, and its design. You can't go, you can't have a street sign that lights up, it has to be X feet off the street, so you literally drive by, you have no idea that there's a Walmart, a Target, and everything else behind the bushes. You just, you can't see it. So for them, it looks like, it still looks like this very um quaint area, but literally drive twenty feet past that tree, there's a shopping mall behind you. That's the kind of stuff to, as you were saying, I think we need to get to. We need to hold developers or builders to a, to a standard, to be part of the neighborhood. You just can't put a three, four-story block in the middle of the, in, in the middle of the street, so. Um, so again, talk about policies, that's a great policy for the council to develop um and put forth and not have the design review be an advise, actually be an enforcement in some way, shape, or form. So we'll see where that goes.
Yeah, definitely. Well, thank you for answering those questions. And while we've kind of covered a broad range within that, also certainly not everything, but given time permitted, we'll talk more. But uh, anything else that we hadn't touched on yet that would you like to uh use to share uh in this opportunity with the voters and residents?
Yeah, I mean, I guess ultimately, the, the question always gets asked, why do you, why did you decide to run? And I think um I, I decided to run because um uh, one of the things I was proud of when I, when I was on the council to in twenty twenty uh five, two thousand and five to two thousand and seven, is I felt that I represented the people. I, one of the things I tried to do when I was on then and now, I will certainly do uh when I'm on the council now, is I want there to be more open discussion. I, that, that, you can use the word transparency. And I don't want necessarily, that's a word gets beaten up, I'm gonna say open discussion. Um, that, my job on, or my role on the council is to be your voice. I am the voice of thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand, again, whatever that number, I think it's around that. Residents, that's my job. I am one of nine people, but my, I can, I will swear on the Bible when I have to swear on it, that ultimately my role is to be your voice. And like I said, if you look at my campaign signs, that's what it says, your voice represented. So I want the folks to know that if I am so given the honor to be on the council for the next two years, that is my one and primary goal, which is to serve the people and be their voice. And anytime that they want to share something with me, I will listen and I will be their voice and communicate that back to the other eight members and the rest of the community while I have the bully pulpit sitting at that half moon table two times every month on a Wednesday. So that, that's, that's, that's my story, and that's why I'm doing this. And and ultimately, um, I, I may be a little unusual, I do enjoy doing this. When I did this twenty, those two years, they were very, I had fun doing it, I did. It's, it's, it can be, you can argue, it can be difficult, but I actually have fun doing it. So it's fun.
I think the, the, the fun part is having kind of the civil discussions, still agreeing to disagree, but making moves forward, and that's where we need to go, is forward somehow.
Yeah, correct, correct. Yeah, we have, we gotta find a way to make, continue to make Franklin better. That's what we need to do. That's what we need to do. So again, I appreciate the time that you gave me tonight, Steve, to answer some questions. Um, and like I said, if anyone else has any other questions, they'll, they'll get my email and phone number and this, they certainly can reach out to me. I'm more than happy to answer any questions anyone has, so.
Good, well, thank you for that. And to the listeners, thank you for listening. Hopefully, you will take advantage. If you've got additional questions, you see Mike might go around somewhere somehow, buttonhole him.
Right.
Bend his ear, whatever. But yeah, do it civilly, of course.
Very good, touche.
Thank you again for doing this. Listeners, thank you for listening. And a quick reminder, we do this because Franklin matters.